Whether or not there might be time for Bay Vines to have a relook at some of those fees and tweak them up a little bit further, so that we might be able to offset some of that 600k subsidy and/or you have more revenue to be able to improve the level of service. If there is time for that process, then I think it would be a worthwhile exercise. So I guess my question is firstly about what's the implications if we did defer this decision until we've got a council meeting coming up in 2020 March, so it's not that far away, that we could leverage those fees up a little bit more, so that we're on the average and so that we have the right revenue coming in. After all, people will be impacted by the fee increase, the marginal increase, I mean of what's proposed, is literally marginal, it's relatively small. If you're going to rip the plaster off, I'd say rip it off properly and make sure that we get the right fee structure in place.
So Paul, I think we were a bit, you can't necessarily answer it, but Paul had his finger on the button. What is the timing for this? Because we are assuming that it is feeding into the annual plan, and so that's quite a rigid timetable.
Yes, so the main user fee report has been delayed until the 20th of March to go back and have a look at some of those fees as well. And subsequent to that, we will go out to consult on those fees through late March-April time period. So we do have the time to do that. We don't need to adopt the annual plan until the 30th of June. We are looking to adopt earlier this year, but we can actually work within that timeframe if the fees are coming in, I'm assuming on one July. So we do have the timeframe there.
So do you want to have a discussion here now about that?
We can probably give you some quick feedback and then we can potentially come back in March. I think just in terms of timing, so the proposal was to pick up any of the general admission fees, so for a casual user coming to a swimming pool, that that would start from one July, whereas any of our regular user groups, giving them a chance to update any funding requests and things like that, that would normally start in one January 2024. So, but certainly in terms of looking at that and coming back in March, there's no issue for us to do that. We have had an initial look at some things to see, you know, we ran a whole range of scenarios, of course, so we can certainly have a look at that. I think one note of caution, you did mention it Stephen, which is valid, is the quality of some of the facilities is lower, and I think particularly of things like our community halls and some of our sports facilities. So there are areas where we probably have to be a little bit mindful of not pushing that too hard. So we were, I guess, careful not to push some of those things up to that national benchmark when maybe the facility is quite hard where they need to be. But we can certainly have a look and come back to you.
Just the other part for our staff, the discussion from the commissioners, is that we're a bit sort of, we're very conscious that the grant that you get from council hasn't increased over the years, and that we do need to be looking at that. So there's a bit of hesitation about combining, the way the report is written at the moment, you're putting up your fees and charges, but you're still short, and so we make up some more. And I think it would be quite helpful to actually divide that conversation. So we actually have a discussion about the grant, which we need to increase, and we understand that, and we do that in quite a transparent way. And at the same time, you're increasing your user fees and charges, and you've got some capital works, and that is done as a separate part. Does that make sense, Paul? So that we're not, the way we're doing it at the moment is we're saying, you're going to put your fees and charges up, so therefore you've got a deficit, so therefore we need to put more money in. But it's not clear to the public, I think we're trying to get this as transparent as we possibly can, that actually the rate payers are supporting these facilities because they're part of community facilities, and they never make a profit. And we shouldn't expect them to make a profit. We want you to run them in a commercial manner, but they're community facilities. So that we get that transparent picture for the public as to what they're paying for. Whether or not they use them and pay on top, they're still contributing towards making sure those facilities are available. So if we can do that when it comes back to us in March, it would be helpful.
Yeah, look, we can certainly do that. We just wanted to make sure that you had a full appreciation of where things were sitting.
Talk about your staff facilities.
So again...
Picture tells a thousand words.
Yes, and there are a few pictures in the back, which you would have noticed. Look, to be honest, I've been on board now for 15 months. When I arrived, I was very surprised at the poor standard of the office accommodation that we have in place at the moment. And with that, you know, we have staff just at Bay Park, spread across probably 10 different office locations. And the biggest thing for me is how do you actually build good teamwork to be able to deliver the community outcomes that we're looking to do? So that's the biggest challenge, is that inhibits automatically the communication and collaboration. So by bringing people together, that will enable us to build the culture that we're looking to develop to be able to, like I said, deliver on the community outcomes. I think the other thing I wanted to note is that we're not asking for any new money. This is actually just taking existing budgeted funds at Bay Park and reallocating that. So we're not asking for anything extra.
Thank you. And look, I should have acknowledged actually the great work that you're doing in my previous comments, and the fact that you have addressed the need to get the balance right between community and service provision. On this matter, I support the recommendation, though I do note that, you know, it means that we are robbing Peter in the short term. Maybe they have to repay Paul a little bit further down the track, depending on what happens with the stadium. So, and there is always obviously the ongoing cost of depreciation, et cetera, of that fallout. Notwithstanding all of that, I think having the team together under one roof and creating the right sort of culture is exactly the right sort of thing to be doing, particularly when you have to delicately balance that commercial versus service to community service delivery. So happy to support that recommendation.
I'm just sorry, I'm just checking what we recommend, because I think you get the flavour, we support in principle what you're trying to do, but we want the paper to come back to us then on the 20th of March. Is that what we're saying? Or both? Yeah, and get that done. Okay, so Stephen's moving D and E, and then A, D and E. So Stephen's moving that, and Bill's seconding that. Yeah, but I also would like us to actually separate out, so that we then have that grant that council gives, so that's quite clear.
Principal support for user fees and a direction to look at the grant funding through a future report.
So... No, I don't think you should frame it as required. I think it should be quite clear that that's the grant that we're giving them. It's the linkage of the two that I'm worried about. Okay, so you've got that wording? So you're moving that whole lot? Yeah. Makes it easier. Well... Clear as mud?
Absolutely understand the direction.
Okay, so moved by Stephen and seconded by Bill. Do you want to put the wording up for us, just so we're clear on what we're actually... A, D and E are fine, it's just that approving in principle the grant funding with increases where possible. Is that approving in principle? Have you forgotten already? Where possible. And then, and a further report outlining the subsidy, the grant for BVL. Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep. For the grant for use of public facilities, public, community facilities. Yeah.
There are a couple of options, I guess, when you think about this, that if the increase in fees is achieved, then the grant could be either reduced, or it could be left at the same amount, or more, which might result in a better provision of community services.
And that's why, that's why I think we need to have that conversation as a conversation, which we did signal when we set up the new board. We recognised that that grant had not changed for a long period of time, and it was clearly causing huge problems. And that's another conversation that I think we need to have. So I've just made B. Yep, yep. I don't know how you manage with four different screens open. I have trouble with one. So you need to remove the takeout and a grant. So I've got now, if you want to change... Receive it. With a view... With a view to increasing fees where possible and a further report for the grant. Yeah, so we need to change principal, oops, and take out the hand of grant.
I can just add that maybe when we come back to look at that grant funding, we will also consider the depreciation and debt funding that's sitting in the background as well, so we can probably wrap those things up.
It would be really good, I think, because we've been trying to work towards that sort of open and transparent look at, yeah. Ah, plus a sensible grant. Yeah, so in B, you've got... I hope we're taking notes on this for our new civic fari.
Just the spelling of principal. Okay, you got that?
Yep. That was difficult, sorry. Pretty good. Yep, you happy with that mover and seconder? So with that addition of, in B of... Yep, they just haven't got it up on there because they've got to take it off and put it on that screen, then move it over to that screen. Yep. Okay, so moved and seconded. You happy with that? And we'll see you back in March 20th meeting. The only thing I would say is I am mindful of the fact that it is going to be a tough year for a lot of people, and we already know that many of our community groups are suffering badly financially. So keep that in mind. There's somewhere we can go up. All right, I'll put that then. All those in favour say aye. Against, carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. 11.2 traffic and parking bylaw amendment.
Yes, I can, I'll talk to that. I've had an apology from the transport team this morning, they will be joining us for the deep dive a little bit later on. So this bylaw change request is about changes for safety and operational reasons and to enable enforcement. Appendix A divides them into five categories, and then appendix B details each and every one of the changes. There are a mix of private requests, business requests, and also a tidy up of signed limits that haven't currently been bylaws, so we haven't been able to enforce them. So this process will enable that, and happy to take any questions.
Moved and shared, seconded, and Chad has a question.
Just on page 92, I think it is, about the Devonport Road 10 minute time limit. I assume that's outside the Quest, the Quest Hotel? And do we have sufficient...
Number 71, sorry.
Yeah, number 71.
I can look that up.
And then do we have, I mean, I was walking up there this morning, and I was wondering if sufficient space in that part of the corridor for loading and unloading. That was just my name.
Yeah, that's something we're very conscious of now with all the development going on in the city, to enable the parking and loading, while we give access as much as we can to pedestrians, but also to the developers, as well as the businesses. So I'll look up 71, but I tend to agree with you, I think that's where it is. I can look into it in the next minute, and I can mention it when we come back to, under the executive report, mate. Thank you.
All right, so it's moved and seconded, and Nick's going to follow up on that query. Any further discussion? All those in favour say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. That brings us to the exec report. Want us to come back to infrastructure or...
That's okay, we can do that.
You want to make any comments?
Yeah, lack of pictures this time.
We did notice.
Yes. Yeah, we didn't, well, we will show you in the deep dive this afternoon, we will have a few pictures on the effects of the weather events, et cetera, and the impact of that on the business and the city. Other than that, I did notice, I yellow carded myself here for not spelling out what LGFA stands for, that's the Local Government Funding Agency. I should probably highlight the summer holiday waste collection, because that is something commissioners has brought our attention before, and you have been interested in knowing how that summer campaign went. And by all accounts, it did seem to have gone really well. We did some preempted communication before Christmas, and then we increased the collection as well, particularly around the rubbish bins. We did an earlier start in the morning and then did a second run in the afternoon. And what that did was that we had no increase in the feedback over the summer holiday period, which is something to be said for actually, because usually, I mean, we always get feedback, which is a good thing. And there was no increase in that over the summer holiday period, so that's quite an achievement, I think. But we're still, we're still looking into that sort of, we're still doing a forensic investigation of that period, so we will get back to you with some more detail on that. But the balcony view, I think, is that it went really well. We had missed collections on six streets, I think we called out here on the 26th of December. It's purely because of volume, A and B, so much more parked vehicles, that it often makes it a lot trickier for trucks to navigate some of the narrow streets and get access to some of the bins, so it just slows them down. So it's a combination of the two factors that I think it's a pretty good result, just to have the one day of not achieving it, and that was picked up the next day. So overall, a success. Other than that, happy to take any questions.
So the question I had on that in particular, and I certainly didn't get the complaints that I had last summer from people, so that was good. What is the timing of that analysis coming back to us? coming back to us? Any idea?
It'll be a matter of weeks. Yeah, I can commit to having something to you during March.
And are we checking out with Sue Hodgkins? Is it Hodgkins? Because it would actually be quite good for someone that we know is actually on the ground all the time picking up litter to get their feedback. It'll never be enough. We know we can never do enough, but it would be quite helpful to know whether she actually saw an improvement.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I know the team is in continuous contact, but what I think I'll do then is that when we come back with the feedback, I'll make sure that we include some commentary from her if she's keen to contribute. That'd be.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Stephen and then Bill.
Thanks, Nick. And I did have a couple of questions also around timing. So I'm on page 95 of the agenda and item paragraph 24, which is Totoro Street. And it's great to see that we're looking to finally have that completed in March once the traffic signals go in. I'm just conscious there's quite a bit of anecdotal commentary coming through from media on the usage of the cycle lanes. And I know that there is a plan to have a report on patronage. There seems to be quite a distinction between commuter usage and weekend usage. And I think it's really important that we understand both those parameters. And it would be good when we receive that report to have a before and after completion. So kind of what's the status now? What is it when the lights are fully in place? And do we have a trend of usage going up? My observation is that having used that three days a week, most mornings, that corridor, commuter traffic patronage is still relatively low. And so very interested in that. And some of that is not using the corridor. A small proportion of determined commuters still use the road rather than the pathway. So yeah, I think that was an important project for the council. It's a major initiative in terms of walking and cycling. And so to have a clear understanding and a thorough report on that, I think, would be good. And we'll probably need a further follow up in another, say, six months after that initial report. But I'm keen to see the results from that.
I've taken notes there on what it is Commissioners looking for, so we'll make sure to include that and with the before and after. And I've made the same observations in terms of the commuters and the strolling or, you know, just cruising bikers over the weekend, that commuters tend to still stick to the road, which is a bit disappointing really because it's, I mean, from what we're looking, we want to, this gives people a safe choice. But it isn't just about the bikers. If you look at the consequences for the truckie, for instance, that was involved with a fatality, that, you know, cyclists can be really, really difficult for them to see with a big vehicle. So sometimes I think cyclists also need to be considerate of their surroundings. So it kind of goes both ways. And I think we maybe can do something in communicating that better as well. But yes, the same observation.
It's interesting. Last week, I saw a commuter group of four or five group together and using the full dedicated cycle lane pathway, exactly as it was intended. This morning, there was just one commuter in my slice of observation. He was on the road with his light flashing until he got to the intersection. And then he held road and then he pulled onto the pathway where he figured, I presume he could jump the lights on the bus. So your observation about cycle behaviour and how they use the system is on the money. So I suspect we're going to need some education about how to use this immunity.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is quite different. You know, we think that we are sort of aiming for the European way of cycling to and from work when they're on setup and being sort of, you know, the moustache type handlebars. And they go quite slowly, whereas New Zealand commuters seem to want to arrive at work with bloodshot eyes, having given it everything. So there is a difference in attitude, I think, that maybe we need to work on with people.
My other query is on 27. Where you note that an internal reporting and monitoring performance project is underway, and we've spoken about this before. I'm keen to understand what the timing of that is going to be. I actually find the executive report extremely helpful each time we get it because it brings focus at a council level as to kind of what's going on. What's missing for me is a clear understanding in that report of, you know, issues like, how is congestion? How did we get on over the summer holidays? Was it particularly bad or was it okay? How is safety? How did our, say, transport system perform? We get reports on the water network and our supply and graphs showing that demand. So I'd like to see that sort of content in the executive report comes on, the key metrics. And I make the observation on the infrastructure, but it's also true of the other departments as well. So yeah, I'm keen to understand where we're at with that internal reporting and monitoring plan and what the timing for actually giving effect to it will be.
Yeah, so this actually talks about something different. This talks about the CPAD, the Capital Project Assurance Division work that we're doing around performance monitoring, reporting and project management 101 with cost control, scheduling, quality control, budgeting, those sorts of things. So that's what this refers to. But I take a point, Stephen, around the monitoring of the network. And we do, of course, have the quarterly monitoring reports where we, and then in the non-financials, we're talking, there are some criteria that we report on in terms of the network, but many of those are annual as well. So it might, we'll have a look into that and see if we can include something in terms of that performance in the exec report.
And I've seen some of the reporting going to the Auckland Transport Board. And I mean, they've kind of gone to the other extreme of kind of excessive information. But there's some good templates in there of some of the key data that might be of assistance.
I'll have a look at that. And of course, we have all the data at our fingertips through T-Talk. And I think you'll remember that well, over the last couple of years with COVID on and off and lockdowns, we sort of followed the trends and then saw how it ramped up after those lockdowns. So we, yeah, we have most of that information, I dare to say, at our fingertips. So it's a matter of finding a reporting format that gives you the intelligence that you need.
You did ask us a little while ago to do top 25 KPIs that reflect the business. And we said we'd come back to you, we're aiming for March. So this one we could add in. You've also talked to us about the CCCs. We're building consensus issued. So we're trying to pick these snippets up. We'll bring you back a draft suite of whatever the number is. We're using 25 as a benchmark and see if we've hit the right things on the mark. And then once you're comfortable, then we'd look to report those regularly.
Thank you.
All right, I'm keeping on turning the pages. No, Bill, sorry, sorry.
Nick, in terms of the transfer station redevelopment, what's the construction period once you left the contract for that? Why, when will it be completed?
I can tell it from the top of my head. I guess would be 18 months, but I'll look into that and come back with a number.
And just a note for when it is operating, I'd use the Malimi Street since its initial construction, which is many years ago. And then over a period of time, and particularly a latter period, it's fair to say the maintenance of that facility seemed to wane. So I'm just raising that in terms of that ongoing commitment to facility maintenance.
Is that what's visual from Malimi Street itself?
No, no. When you go into the site, it started off, and I presume the council itself operated itself for a period of time, just seemed to be a well-operated site. I think over a period of time, it'll be less desirable.
Right, I'll have a look into that.
And my other, and just back on the Totoro Street, delighted, the lights are going up or being turned on. In terms of the, when they're on and there's still a bit of planting in that to go, and then the project is then totally completed?
Yes, yeah. So there'll be a defect liability period, which is usually 12 months. And I'm assuming now that there's a defect liability period similar on this project. So there might be some works happening from time to time during that period where, you know, if we find something that's not to spec or holding up as well as it should.
And just an observation, some of those businesses just tend to dump stuff on the planting and all of that. So it's just keeping an eye on some of that stuff because it is quite an important entrance into the mountain, particularly those coming from the side. So I suppose what I'm encouraging is an overall improvement. It is an industrial area, accept that, but that improvement and the Totoro Street project has certainly helped in that way.
Yeah, I know what you mean. There seemed to be something around about wooden pallets that doesn't apply to anything else, but it seems to be a free for all. But yeah, I'll look into that. Thank you.
But the New Zealand Gardener Magazine, every month has something on what to do with wooden pallets. So I think they put them out there for free for people to take away and make something. And my husband just dreads them coming into the house. The magazines with the ideas, I have to say, like most other husbands around the place, yeah, shared.
And I just want to commend the team, I suppose, in terms of the corporate sustainability plan and the work that's been undertaken and started there. And we did sit on this discussion last week on just transition, which was useful. Just in terms of timing of that, when are we, what does that look like from an organisational point of view in terms of getting that through?
We're looking at having a draft version of the sustainability plan this calendar year. So I think it'll come to chambers for your consideration October time. I'm guessing now about that time. Yeah, towards the end of the year. Yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of the organisation, I understand 20% of our staff use bicycles. We've got quite a good waste programme within the organisation. The way we're designing the new 90 Devonport Road, all of those kinds of initiatives, I think, as an organisation, to be able to show leadership across the city in terms of what we're trying to do from a sustainability point of view, I think is really important. So yeah, just really want to commend the team in terms of the initiatives there. I do have a question about the rainfall, about the extreme weather events. And that graph, I think, was quite useful. And then all the media, you know, hearing about, I think it was about five, six times the level of rainfall that we received during that long weekend period. I suppose my question is, what type of event was that? Was it a one in 50 or one in 100? And then how did that compare with, I mean, we can, we think about other events historically, and we kind of think back to the 2005 flooding events, I suppose, because of the slips and all those things that occurred at the time. So how does that compare with that event? And what type of event was this one? You know, trying to get a gauge on, I suspect we're going to expect more of this type of event. And if this is a one in 50 or one in 100, and they're becoming more frequent, and then how do we plan for these types of things?
It hit our region very differently in that actually, in terms of the rainfall in the city, it wasn't actually extraordinary. So what really hit us was the heavy rainfall in the ranges that then came down streams and brought a lot of, did a lot of damage on the way down. And you will have seen pictures of the Wadawar and, yeah, where the new water treatment plant is as well. We had, that was quite badly flooded at the intake structure and a lot of low-lying areas. But in terms of the rainfall, it wasn't actually extraordinary. I would say maybe in one in 20 or something around the city, but it would have been one in 100 plus in the ranges. And that's why it hit us a little bit different to some other areas. So let's see, Kim, Kim is in the audience here. She might have some better numbers. Could you comment on that, Kim, in terms of the event?
I couldn't tell you what, in terms of numbers, this event was compared to, say, 2005. I think probably it is because of the rainfall we've had over the summer period. And so everything is completely saturated anyway. So anything further is, in terms of flooding or landsliding, it's not ideal.
And the factor of five that you mentioned, Cher, that's, we refer to that in some of our papers, in that we usually have 75 mils. The average rainfall in January is 75 mils. And this summer, we had about 470, 460, 470 during January. So that's what Kim refers to, in that everything was absolutely saturated by the time, a, the anniversary event hit, but then also the effects of the cyclone.
I think what it does show us, though, is that we have to take a whole catchment view. And so possibly this is something that we need to be talking about with our Western Bay people. And maybe it's something through smart growth that we can work together with the Crown, with the regional council and with Western Bay. And I just, I know we've been talking since we arrived of doing a whole of catchment, Wadawar River strategy or agreement or something. There's probably no better time to focus people's minds on that. And the other thing, I guess, I don't quite understand, and I don't think the public understand, is just how many springs come from the back down through our peninsulas. Even down here through Tapapa, there were something like seven springs in the CBD. So we have this catchment that is quite different. And maybe it's an opportunity for us to have some discussions about, is that affected beyond our borders? And, but I think it's something we need to be working on, certainly as a subregion. And the other thing people don't understand is when you talk about one in 100, they think it's only one every 100 years. But tomorrow, you could have another one in 100. Yes. Statistics, what is it? Lies, statistics, lies and damn statistics, or lies, damn lies and statistics, or something like that. Yep, lies, damn lies and statistics. Right, okay. Yep, hard to understand. Okay, moving on. Any more on infrastructure? Emergency Services? Barbara's not here. Hope she hasn't got any. All right, okay. Certainly the library, the comment I'd make is to the library staff, they've done an amazing job over the summer. And well done, well done. Former Education Minister, I know how important it is to keep children's level of reading up over the summer holidays. Go back a year. Nothing? Yes, Bill?
Not much of a question, but a comment, Chair. Really just noted in terms of the high level of service in terms of the cemeteries and taking that maintenance back in the house. So I think it's also a good flag in terms of there's a number of new facilities that have images there. And it's all very well building new facilities, which is great, but that maintenance of them, so they are befitting a city, is very important. So I just wanted to make that comment. so they are befitting, um, a city, um, is very important. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Or just one comment and then, oh, two comments really. Um, the climate change action plan, I did attend the Hoi'i at, um, Hooria with the Rangatahi, the Rangatahi Forum, um, which is well attended. There were about thirty or forty young people there engaged in, um, assisting us, uh, and the partners in developing that plan. It was, uh, it was refreshing, I think, to, to hear from young people and, um, understand or try and get an understanding of their perspectives, uh, and their views around, um, climate change and particularly looking forward into the future. The other comment I want to make is about, um, Isla Park. Um, so we made the decision to, uh, use dual names, uh, the bilingual names of Isla Park and, um, I had to write it down, Tonga Parawa, I think is the name of the park. Uh, I think when we use it, can we, I, I've just noted in the report, we've only got the, the English name. If we can try and use both, we just made that decision last, at, at the last council meeting, so, yep.
And it's great to see so much color on the parks. I think it's fabulous. Makes a big difference. Okay, strategy, growth and governance. Gareth?
So, um, just a couple of submissions here on, um, the resource management reform and, uh, the local electoral legislation bill. So we did work informally with the commissioners, but because of the timing, we couldn't get it to you for formal approvals. This is, um, the final submission, if you're interested. Those are probably the key things, um, and also in terms of Takawai unit noting that the Rangapu's been heavily involved with strategic framework and the Ti'au Maori approach. That Ti'au Maori approach has been to executive and it will come up to, um, Strategy Finance and Risk Committee with some of the other action investment plans as part of that overall package for, for endorsement.
Just a comment, Cher, in terms of acknowledging the work of staff on those submissions. Mr. and Mrs. Subscribed out, so I presume they are. And particularly when you're looking at a daunting tome of over eight hundred pages for a spatial thing. Um, the, the team did a, um, a great job.
Services? The question I had was around paragraph eighty-two. And I have to say, I didn't really understand what that was. So I had ringed City Beautification Project. I didn't know what that was. Um, but I actually, Bill pointed out to me, this is about the, bringing some of those external contracts that look after our city in-house and the preparations for that. Um, but if you were a member of the public and you didn't know that that was happening, I don't think you get that from that, from that paragraph. Uh, so I'm great, I'm delighted it's called, if it's called the City Beautification Project because I know that that is on the hearts and minds of a large number of our, um, community. But I just think we need a better explanation.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you, Stolmy Thunder. He has, he has correctly identified, uh, the name. I think it's a good point though, naming conventions that we use internally need to be consistent so that the community also hear at once as well. So we'll definitely take that on board. With respect to your first question about paragraph one, the city's starting to change and getting ready and using technology to think through ninety Devonport Road or the other amenities Timanawataki will build, technology has to start early. So paragraph one's saying some smart people are sitting in a room and starting to work out what that might look like. Just, uh, some other highlights, uh, for corporate services with respect to community relations. When catastrophes strike and we have a lot of press and communication, the community responds well to the way that the, the council reacts. So we spend more time giving them important information and keeping them connected. As a result, sometimes you do see a bump in scores, um, from just getting into civil defence mode, if you will. With respect to digital services, I think the only other point I'd make is we currently have four hundred thousand customer records and we don't have four hundred thousand ratepayers. So we, we, we have to get off our old system and move into something that's a little bit more closer to being accurate. So there's a bit of discussion there around EA, ERP and SAP. That's, that's the big business challenge we have there. And then finally, with respect to people, every time we see this, we see a goal of turnover of ten percent being where we'd like to get to. So one in ten staff and some turnover is very healthy. We're tracking, we've stayed around fifteen to twenty. And every, when we think about what staff really need, as opposed to just paying a bit more, we may find that it's, there's other reasons why people come to work and the types of benefits. So we still want to get to ten. Um, and there's some commentary about thinking about benefits and what things staff need. So that'll be a big focus between now and the next report.
Good, thank you. Um, uh, I, I think disasters and, and, you know, what, what we've seen over the last month. The good, the good to come out of that is that people are actually going, coming to our, to our portal to get information. So, so it's good to see that people are seeking that information from us. And, and so the more that we can provide to people, the, the, the better our communities are. And that, that sort of part of the relationship building that, that we've been very focused on. So, so actually that was a really good result for us, I think, in, in, in the terms of our relationship with the community.
Think that this was the first time I'd have a chance to observe what happens in a civil defence situation. And having communicators, communications experts in the civil defence room alongside the tradecraft meant that we placed equal amount of importance on what we say and when we say alongside what we do. And I think that balance is, it felt right.
Put a template together for other councils, dare I say. I should have turned the mic on. Um, okay, anything else on corporate services? Uh, regulatory and compliance. Stephen's been cut off at the pass with his certificates of compliance. Is that CCs? Is that what they are? CCs? Yes, CCs. Um, the, the question I guess I have, the only, only, only question I have is well aware and actually had a builder in at the Commissioner's clinic, um, last week with a considerable downturn, um, in, in their work. So I was surprised to see, I guess, in Para ninety-two that we aren't increasing our timeframes, given that we've got less work coming in the door. I mean, if, that's quite a, that was quite a significant builder in the city. Um, and, I mean, he's, he, his work is down. And he had one as, as against normally seven or eight this year. So doesn't that give us an opportunity to catch up? And it doesn't seem as if we have.
It's certainly something that we've been prioritizing, uh, and working on. And, and we've got the, um, timeframe timeliness up to over seventy percent. And it came from, uh, the low forties last year. So it is, we are getting on top of it and there had been a significant backlog. I think one of the things that we touch on in the paper and the report in the resource consent section is the complexity of builds and consenting that are happening. And sometimes, uh, while there might be fewer consents coming through, we know that, uh, land is becoming more and more difficult in the city, um, to build on. So timeframes can reflect some of those complexities as well, but it's certainly, we're, we're tracking upwards, which is positive.
The concern is it's actually, if, if, if you're a build, big building firm and you've only got one house, um, on the books this year, you really need to be able to get on, onto it and make your money. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm anticipating that we're going to get up to, what are we aiming for? Ninety, ninety, ninety-two percent or something like that? Yep, really want to see significant movement in that in the next report. Bill?
Just following on that theme, Sarah, I know, I noticed the report talks about the lower than ideal compliance also over that December-January period and that. Um, and I know there will be some people on leave and that, but it is about how we maintain that momentum throughout the twelve month period because the, that building community, they're still, they have generally short breaks or whatever, but certainly maintaining and getting through what we need to do in terms of consent issue and inspection.
But other question really was over Para ninety-seven and this building warrant of fitness issue that's arisen with MB. I mean, how serious is that for the city?
I think it's fair to say at this stage, it's a frustration. Uh, and when we are not able to issue the BWFs in a, in a way that we might have previously, it's causing a lot of frustrations across, um, builders. So we're working really closely with MB on how to manage that risk. Uh, and the reality is we just have to, um, get on, do the inspections and then be really clear with the owners on what needs to happen, um, and be really firm about that. So really, I think that potentially reputational risk because the expectations are that, um, the BWFs would be issued immediately as they have been in the past, but they're not now. So working through that.
And, and so the information that, um, that's required, so you, you say the past twelve months' records are incomplete. Is that, is that our fault? Is that the building owner's fault? Is it a combination of all of that? What, what, what is, what is the actual problem in there? Is that a new requirement or?
It's a new requirement from MB. So that's the part that's caused some confusion where, um, property owners may not have been reporting on the information that, um, on an annual basis. Um, and so we haven't been looking at on an annual basis and MB now require the process to be done differently.
So in the past, so, so in the past, how, how, how is it differed? And so, so, so now they require all that information. What, 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 what was the process beforehand? You just looked at the state of the building at this point in time?
That's right. We would look at it at a specific state of time and we'd be able to issue it with, if, if it was in that twelve month period. Yep, but MB have changed their guidelines. So it's causing, um, concerns around New Zealand. It's not just in this district. Yeah.
Anything else? Yeah, Shad?
Just on Para, um, one-on-one, and I, uh, note we're down, I think, nine planners. Um, I think when the commission first started, it was highlighted that we're short of planners. And then we made considerable efforts to get it back up and then we had a full complement and then now we're down again. Um, and I assume when there is a gap, we're back to using consultants. Is that what the approach is?
That's correct, yes.
And I, you know, um, I assume it'll be a challenge for everybody to fill, to get planners and fill those roles and across other councils, but also consultancies as well, competing for the same people.
Absolutely a challenge and we're working really closely with our metro partners just to, um, understand how we can share resources or are there ways in which we need to do our business slightly differently? One thing we have just explored is bringing on new graduates, um, into the team and having a dedicated training resource there. We've got five since January, which is great news. Uh, that takes time for them to build and develop, but we're hoping that if we just have a rolling recruitment of planners into the team, as seniors might move and go in to start their own consultancies, that'll be a constant shift. So we're just trying to front foot that as best we can.
Okay, uh, that brings us to uh, sets, yep. City development and partnerships. Gareth?
A tamare akoto. Um, just a couple of highlights before I happy to take any questions. Um, uh, besting some resource to drive external fundraising is paying dividends with the confirmation of the twelve point one million from Better Off Waters funding and then over two million dollars of external funding to support the, uh, Destination Playground at the Mount. So pleased with our initial progress and obviously, um, progressing a whole lot of other opportunities to secure external funding, not only for the Tamanawataki suite of projects, but other projects that the organization's undertaking. Currently advertising for, uh, CCO board roles for Tourism Bayplindi, Toranga Art Gallery. And then also the new Tamanawataki Ulta Pappa, Ulta Pappa Delivery CCO. Um, flat out on the waterfront, the cargo shed is, uh, finished and has been handed over to Community Services to operate, um, who are going to trial it over the next three months. Uh, the Dive Crescent Car Park is well underway, as you probably see on the way into the city. And we've just confirmed, uh, a new block of line works for being able to do the railway underpass at Easter. So we don't have to wait twelve months. That's confirmed for Easter, which is exciting. And finally, uh, Wallace Bond and LT McGinnis is well, well advanced in terms of establishing onsite at ninety Devonport Road with a blessing planned for Friday this week to actually physically put a spade in the ground and keep cracking. Happy to answer any questions.
So I just, the, the Three Waters Better Off Funding. So is that the full amount that we applied for? Uh, I'm just aware that, uh, when the, we required the sign-off from local Manu Fenua. And so there were some discussions from, from them about, um, things that we've talked about in the past, actually, uh, giving them some priority to join into water services and connections and things. So was there any money for that taken off the Three Waters funding? Or is that, um, it just goes into the normal infrastructure planning and, and provision? Um, so it was like a side note.
Yeah, so we're covering that in, in the normal council budget. And, and many of those projects that we talked about with, um, Manu Fenua are projects that have been on the cards for some time. So, um, we, we, we're working through a list of those and they are covered under the normal budgets.
Just wanted to get in my head whether that was the full amount because I, I had, I must say, I had in my head that it was a slightly higher amount of twelve point five or twelve point six or something.
Right, no, pretty sure it's twelve point one. The total amount is obviously forty, uh, forty-eight point six, I think it was. So that's trying, the balance of that will come in tranche two in, uh, twenty-four when we can apply.
Hopefully. Hopefully. Um, okay, so that, that was, that was me. Shad?
Thanks, Gareth. Um, it's great to see, uh, you know, this section of the report because there's a lot going on. Um, so whether that's in Tamanawataki or the waterfront, and even the waterfront, I mean, broken down into each of those individual projects, there is a lot going on, um, right across the CBD. I was kind of thinking, um, it would be great to see that in a, in a, uh, like a Gantt chart of some kind with each of the projects and, uh, each of the milestone points of where we're at, whether it's in planning, design, um, from, from concept or preliminary through to concept to the detailed and then delivery and then dates for completion, um, just to kind of get a clear view of where we are at with all those streams of work.
More than happy to bring that back to the table.
Chair, um, Memorial Park, Gareth. Um, noted there in terms of the plan for design and construction. Um, off the top of your head, or you might have more detail. I'm, I'm interested in terms of the decision-making dates, um, in respect of that project. Decision-making dates that we make before we depart.
The, um, we just employed a, um, senior staff member to
The, we just employed a senior staff member to take on that project. They started on Monday last week. We've been working with the contractors to support moving that project forward over the last couple of months. So in two weeks, we go to market for a design partner and then about three weeks after that, we're going to market for an ECI construction partner. So that project's moving forward at a relatively fast pace now. The, the key decision-making will be around the long-term plan in regards to updated costings that we've received for delivering the project as was envisaged. We've also during the work that we've been doing over the last couple of months, run into some seismic issues with the existing indoor courts facilities. So we're doing a piece of work to weigh up the cost difference between retrofitting the existing building to make it fit for purpose versus pulling it down and starting again. So that work's nearly, nearly done and that will inform part of what we come to you to inform you so that you can, you know, give us guidance. I can check on exact dates, but my understanding is that that updated budget information will go into the LTP and it'll be part of an LTP conversation.
Yes? Tanks reserved. Did you want to know the completion date?
I will find out for you.
Nothing more? Maybe we received the executive report seconded by Stephen. Thanks very much. Thank you, everyone. Oh, Nick?
Yeah, can I just make a comment on the 71 Devonport? So that's, it is outside Quest and there's an area there where we don't actually have to remove any parking to include a loading bay. And we'll just keep an eye on the functionality of it. We're sort of doing a review of the loading base around the CBD as the, as we crank up the, the pace of development. So that's where it is. Thank you.
Shouldn't I? Okay, so we're doing more than receiving the report. So we're receiving it and we're retrospectively endorsing submissions to Natural and Built Environment and Spatial Planning Bill, Inquiring to the 22 Election and the Sale and Supply of Alcohol Amendment Bill. So you count seconded. So Bill will second. Stephen moved and Bill seconded those recommendations. Any further discussion? All those in favour say aye? Against? Carried. And just note that Shad did not take any part. So that brings us then to the submission on, to Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act. Straightforward. Margaret, Margaret, by the time she gets here, we probably have it moved and seconded and ready to go unless anyone's got any questions on it. Bill's moved and Stephen has seconded. Good work. Thank you. You did discuss, was discussed with us at one stage, but it's pretty sensible. And the focus is making sure that the public get good information and the timing. Okay. All those in favour say aye? Against? Carried. There we are. See? Simple. Thank you. Tonga de Fenua appointments to Smart Growth. Teora and Ricky Nelson. I don't think I've met Ricky Nelson. Moving that, Bill. Thank you. Shad seconded. Yep.
Quick, quick question on C. Takahui, Mana Fenua or Tooranga Moana? I'm not familiar with that. Is, is that Western Bay? Ah, okay. Okay. So, so we're approving our Tooranga Park, but also Western Bay's nominee at the same time.
Yes, because it's a committee under the Local Government Act and so because they're external members, as in they're not an elected member of one of the councils, which is nominated by the council, all of the partners from a process point of view need to sign them off. Yep. Local Government Act. So yeah.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favour say aye? Against? Carried. And we have a date for the first meeting of the Smart Growth Partners. And we have a further submission on the Future for Local Government Panel. So we've spent a bit of time on this and I think, do you want to make some opening comments?
Mea culpa. There's one mistake in paragraph 17 with the word "not" is quite critically missing and thank you to Coral for finding that. We can cover that with Resolution C, which is that minor drafting error, but because that one turns the sentence completely breez, I thought I'd mention it.
Paragraph 17.
Yeah, County says, second sentence, however, we do believe that review should be led by central government. I don't think we do. I think it is not.
Okay. Yes, I think we've put a lot of effort into this and it also reflects the conversations we've had with the panel. We have tried to be, because we don't have a vested interest, I think, because we're not elected members, we've made the point that we're in a slightly different position therefore and, and perhaps can take a more independent view. I think for me, having gone through, as Bill did, the 1989 reconstruction of renovation of local government, it was a great pity that it was overwhelmed by, by boundary changes and some of the really critical changes that were made and the reasons that they were made were overlooked. And in particular, the formation of the, of the regional councils, which brought together a whole lot of, a whole myriad of small committees like catchment boards, rabbit boards, I forget the list, but there were, there was a long list of them. Drainage boards, all of whom were concerned with the environment. And of course, there was no one who had responsibility for looking after air quality, water quality, land quality, et cetera. And so, you know, that was a quite significant change that was made. And I guess I, I personally have been a bit disappointed that this current discussion and, and about the future for local government hasn't taken that back seat to have a look at that wider picture of all the rules and regulations and who's responsible for what and where, where all those functions could and should lie. And I just don't see the flavour of that. So, so that's partly what we, that's what we're trying to reflect in, in our submission. Because for a small country, we run the risk of being totally over-regulated. I personally think we have far too many councils, too many territorial authorities. I, I, I wonder about today's function of a regional council and some of, and some of that we've reflected through this. We definitely agree with a four-year term. And, and in the discussions that we've had with central government, we are trying to talk about a better alignment and partnership between local government and central government. And that means we've got to line up things like commitment to funding, parliamentary and local government terms of appointment and then that long-term planning. And again, we've tried to reflect that through here. So I, I think the submission that we're putting in is substantial. I think the staff and Jeremy, who's worked through it all, I did enjoy your first draft with your real thoughts. I always like to have the good, the bad and the ugly. And it was good to know that even from a staff point of view, some of the things that frustrated us, that us as commissioners were reflected in the staff's views, and particularly around some of the things that that panel was focusing on when there are other much bigger, horrier subjects that we wanted them really to, to, to get stuck into. So I, I, I'm very comfortable with the submission that we've put forward. I was a bit disappointed with the work that we've done with Hamilton City Council. They've watered it down a bit, as, as you would expect from elected members. But I still think that that's, that's an important role that we can play working alongside our colleagues and in particular highlighting the need for a special place for metros and a special understanding of the pressures that our country's metros are experiencing. I sit around the table with those metro councils, right across the board. Timeliness, the conflict with criteria and funding mechanisms from central government, and, and then that pressure from the need to, to be able to expand, but not having control and having to, to work with, with other surrounding territorials. They'd actually use all the facilities in a metro, including transportation. And, and as the house, cost of housing goes up, more and more of those new subdivisions are happening in smaller towns outside of the metros, but are then acting as dormitory suburbs for the metros and requiring the services from the metros. And, and that, that, that does need to be recognised. So that flavour, of course, comes through the work we're doing with Hamilton, which we can't release yet until Hamilton give us permission to do that. But once they do, that will also go up on our, on our websites. So yeah, so that's my opening comments. Stephen, I know you want to make some further.
Thank you, Chair. And I totally agree with your, your commentary. I think the submission, not only this one, but also the one on the planning law reform, have both been really well put together. At the core of the, the issue here is that we have a kind of a piecemeal disconnected review of our planning laws, our local government structures and our water, our Three Waters. They should all be joined up because they're all part of the same story, but they're not. And what really concerns me is that we're going to end up with six planning laws, the Spatial Planning Act, the National Built and Environment Act, the Existing Local Government Act and the Land Transport Management Act. And then we're going to have two climate change acts, the Climate Change Response Zero Carbon Amendment Act, which is already being passed, and the Proposed Climate Change Adaptation Act. And those six pieces of legislation, and there are actually many more, but those are the core pieces of legislation, are going to be administered unless there is some sort of structural change in local government by 78 regional and territorial authorities across the country. We've got one council looking after a third of our population and 76 looking after the other two thirds, which sort of defies logic. And then we've got an enormous number of misaligned siloed crown agencies and departments also operating in this system. And the submission sums it up well. This will remain a highly complex structure and system for resource management in a small country like New Zealand with a population of just 5 million. I couldn't actually think of a more complex statutory institutional and funding framework. And what we really need is a system that is aligned where the institutions have the appropriate money and the right decision-making powers so that we can get on with, implement stuff. Little wonder we have a housing and transport crisis in the city because the system is running against us consistently and frankly, and sadly, I have no optimism for the legislative change that we're going through because it is not joined up. And that's exactly what we need is a joined up system. So I'm pleased the submissions are strong on those points. I would frankly have been even more forced right, but you can hear the sentiment that I'm conveying. We should have done better than this. Thanks, Chair.
And certainly agree with sentiments expressed in terms of the reform process. And I must admit, it feels like we're doing retrofitting before we've actually got the arrangements in place. And it would have been great, and we touch on it in our paragraph 108, in, in terms of what the, a potential structure in the, in the Bay of Plenty. And also, let's establish the functions for local government first before we focus on the form. And I have a really grave concern, particularly when you look through the resource management reforms, the structures that are proposed through that process, and then whatever emerges through the local government reform process. And I think in Stephen's, who mentioned it very clearly, also that opportunity for disconnect. And I have to say, disappointingly, I'm not too sure whether we will be any further advanced in connecting up the strategy, in the planning and the, the funding and the decision-making than we are now. And probably one of my great frustrations, when I chaired Smart Growth, good lot of focus on the strategy and planning, but at the end of the day, the implementation and actually sorting out the funding arrangements was where things fall over. I'm not sure all of this, despite what we've outlined in our submission, will actually resolve those issues. So nothing more to say in that generality, but Jeremy, I do have a couple of further suggestions for the submission. And had, we discussed these way back, but I, I forgot to raise them earlier. This one goes on the 28th. So one is the suggestion of split elections. So you only have a vote for half the council for every three or four years. And that's part of that is actually having that continuity and some longevity in the process in terms of people being there, then new people potentially coming on board. So a bit like the Energy Consumer Trust approach, which, which have something like that.
So just for clarity, Bill, before we go further, go to write this up. Are you suggesting therefore that every four years, half the council gets elected, which effectively means it's an eight-year term then to people?
Potentially, yes. But I'm coming to that also. Also having a maximum term, terms. And whether that might be three, four-year terms, I'm not too sure. And maybe the submission talks about investigating that as opposed to settling on a particular figure. So those were the two additional suggestions I've had.
I'm happy to include those. I only think I, an eight-year commitment is quite a big commitment to ask of someone. Would you get the right sort of candidates? You might get the candidates who can't find anything else to do for that other eight years. That's the risk.
Option obviously is to have a four-year term and elections every two.
That's even worse. Everyone happy to include the split? Eight-year terms are long term. That's the only thing. Yeah. Yeah. What if the wrong half had to stop? You're putting it all, I've just, you're just putting an awful lot of faith in democracy to elect the right people. You're putting an awful lot of faith in democracy to elect the right people. Yeah, I do like the limitation, three terms. Yeah, but if they keep the three-year term, because the reality is local government won't go to a four-year term unless central government does. That's, they've sort of been, it's one of the few things that they agree on. So if they kept the three-year term, then a split of half, because then your commitment is for a six-year term, which is more reasonable, given that, you know, the UK has five-year terms. So we could perhaps have that as a suggestion. Yep, yeah. If that didn't happen, then to consider a split, yep.
I'll work some words up and share them with you before it goes off tomorrow.
I certainly do support a limitation on the number of terms. That's a very healthy thing. Okay, all right, thank you. So we're receiving the report, the draft submission, approving it with amendments to be added during the meeting if necessary. Yep, well, there we are, got that. Delicates authority to General Manager Strategy Growth and Governance to make drafting typographical and presentation amendments. And then attachment to, we must be approving that as well.
It's part of the submission, so by approving the submission, it's an attachment to the submission, so it all comes together.
And that can go into open when Hamilton gives us the okay.
Yeah, they've got a slight extension to the deadline because of the, I guess, the timing of their council meeting to approve as well.
Okay, so that's been moved by Bill and seconded by Stephen. All those in favour say aye. Against, Carid, thank you very much. LTP assumptions. Oh my gosh. I started on this so assiduously. This is why I didn't go into accounting or something. Who's going to take us through this?
I'll give it over to you, but Paul and I can probably respond to any specific questions. So as part of the long-term plan, you are required to identify significant forecasting assumptions. The organisation then uses those assumptions as a base. It's really important that we get those signed off early on. Some of them are more all-encompassing and impactful than others. Probably the key ones to be aware of are the population and dwelling projections, which are aligned with the approved smart growth projections. We just phase the timing based on our assessment on things that are happening. And also, we look at the split between green and brownfields, et cetera. And then some of the key financial ones are around inflation, the interest charges, et cetera. There are a number of them. They are happy if there's any specific questions on any of those.
My husband had to bring me several cups of coffee while I was reading this. Yes, Bill.
Christine, just in terms of, I'm on page 185, population household projections, et cetera. So we've got the resident population and then the projections out. I just really wanted to know how we have done, say, in the last 10, 15 years or 20 years, between actual and what the projections were. Was really just to get a bit of an understanding, are we generally, are we generally on the mark with projections? Or, that used to happen, certainly when I came here, growth was there and a lot of the projections were well below that. So it's just having that degree.
So we look at the projections we've done through the Smart Growth Strategy, but also stats. And stats deliver a low, a medium and a high. We generally pitch between the medium and high because that's generally where it sort of sits. They reforecast regularly, Stats New Zealand, and we do keep an eye on that. And modified, let's say, in terms of the long-term 50-year plan, we stick with smart growth until we review those. So we're working together with the partnership. And for the long term, you know, for the beyond the 30 years, it's more about sequencing rather than the exact quantum. And then within the 30 years, which is the infrastructure strategy that we have to do as part of the LTP, and within the 10 years, generally we're pretty much, there's a reasonable alignment between the projections and where we end up, particularly on the 10 years.
I had a question, and I think we kind of raised it earlier. I think it's on number six and seven, around climate change and stormwater and, sorry, I'm just rolling. Natural hazards. And it was a discussion we had earlier about understanding what's happening further up those, up the catchments and the impacts that they have on us. And how we account, I know it's a challenge, but whether there's opportunities to account for that in some way. Through these assumptions that, I suppose, just looking about, looking at what happened down in the Hawke's Bay from outside, yeah, from those upper catchment areas and how we accommodate that in terms of these assumptions.
Thank you. He's going to draw the straw on this one. So we do have a lot of modelling. I'm just trying to remember whether some of the modelling does do the upper catchment stuff and flows through. It does, okay, so I think you do want to cover that.
Yeah, so I think a lot of this is in the planning. And we are, we are taking that into consideration. So, I mean, this is, whether this is a, you know, when you look at, when you look at trends, whether this is a spike or a trend, I guess that's hard to say. But just in terms of general modelling, it is included. And I think that's the impact it will have in the LTP at the moment. Because these are, I mean, if we are going to do something, it's in the planning within the LTP. Any implementation, I'd say, will be outside of that at the moment. And then in terms of resilience, that's, we have a very solid plan for that. And which is about, so the definition of resilience in this regard is around what we do with existing infrastructure to make it more resilient. So it's not development of new projects or new initiatives in terms of resilience.
The urban growth planning, and particularly in greenfields, but also brownfields, does take into account all of these elements, including sea level rise, intense rainfall, flooding from intense rainfall, et cetera. And the infrastructure planning for that, so the new infrastructure does also take that into account, including things like route selection and those sorts of things. I know for the eastern corridor, we relocated, we were going to put the wastewater and water pipes, we were going to run them down the side of the Warraki Stream. But because of the liquefaction and other issues associated with it, it's now been relocated further away as we've started to get more information around that area. And we're thinking more from a resilience lens. So as we're doing this work, the more information we get with modifying and updating our planning.
I'm still back on the table of population projections. And when you look at the totals in that table, the population totals kind of seem plausible. And you would expect that given the Stats New Zealand data. But then when you cast your eye over to the components of the population and that final column to the right that shows additional people, 2018 to 2023, and another 21,000, then 19,000, then it kind of falls off a cliff. And the number of additional people coming to the city is half what it had been in the previous period. And it increases and steady declines after that period. And when you can, of what's happening in Auckland and people progressively kind of thinking about it as that their city of the future, those numbers just don't seem to stack up intuitively. Such a decline in the number of additional people coming to Taronga as you project out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and partially too, it's around available land as well. So we do look at that whole balance. So in the near term, there's not a lot of land available. Nevertheless, though, we do plan with that 30-year lens. And we're constantly monitoring it through the development, things like Development Trends Report, which actually we should be bringing to an ECFR meeting. So if we've got the planning in place, you can pull forward or push back investment based on actually what's happening. So that's sort of generally what we tend to do.
That's what I'm talking, that was what I was really alluding to when I talk about the special role that metros play. Because that's right, we do have, so Taronga's city's population might be eventually constrained by the available land. But that doesn't mean that the surrounding districts aren't fulfilling that need. I mean, you could see Tupuki, for instance, treble in size. We already got an eastern town proposed. We will have places like, we've got Omokoro and Kati Kati and all of those, which will be contributing to the population growth and therefore contributing to the need. But they're not shown in these projections. And I think that's what we're worried about. And I think, you know, that's a really important point for metros, that metros are trying to make to central government. There's none of that's taken into account. And we heard from builders that they were actually building in Mata Mata because the price of land was cheap, therefore they could put affordable houses and people would be working in Tariko West from Mata Mata. So, and then we have to provide, make sure that we are providing in the city to cater for that. So that's the assumption that I don't see, that Stephen doesn't see.
Yeah, totally. And just as an aside, I looked at some of the data on commuting journeys to work into the city in the weekend. And this is 2018 census data, so it's really old. But five and a half thousand people drive into the city from the wider region on a daily basis. That's an enormous, you know, you think of the capacity of a motorway corridor, which is sort of 1,500 cars, maybe 1,800 cars per lane. So, you know, you're talking four lanes of motorway required to just handle that volume. And yet the capacity of our transport system is nowhere near increased by that. So it's little wonder we're having difficulty. So in our assumptions, we have to be clear as to actually what are we, what demand are we servicing? Is it just Taronga City or is indeed the wider sub-region? And clearly it is because that's the reality. And that needs to be factored into our decision-making. And it goes back to our earlier discussion around getting the boundaries of administration right. Because if we haven't got that right in the first place, then you end up with skewed decision-making driven by some arbitrary boundary that doesn't reflect.
So we need to retain the population projections in the house and dwelling projections because they're linked directly to the rates level. But we can add, and just picking up on this conversation, some statements around the wider region and how that impacts on parts of some things. So it will impact on things like transport and possibly community amenity, but probably not so much on local neighbourhood parks and playgrounds because those people are not living here. So we can make some statements about that. I think the other thing is that through the Smart Growth Housing and Business Assessment, which will be coming up to you shortly through Smart Growth and the updated Smart Growth Strategy, that will be the good avenue to have this broader sub-regional conversation about growth, growth beyond the Western Bay and the demands that that's placing. And then you can also pick up all of the issues like the interregional traffic flows, et cetera, more appropriately probably sit at that conversation. It'll come to you in the next, there'll be an update to the March, the April Smart Growth Meeting. And then I think the one after is when you start to get more of this substantive information coming through. So, but we'll add some words in here which talk about those other wider elements. When you pass the resolution, you might want to note, add a further assumption of the impact of growth beyond the Taronga boundaries for Taronga, so we could put that in. It's in the previously, I think it's, even if it was, it's probably more particularly relevant currently with so much reform and change because we're basing it on a certain assumption. If those assumptions are different, then maybe some of the financials that flow from it would be different.
And I may have read it wrongly, but when I saw that more, the cost-efficient methods of delivering. And I go back to my draft and shoot, whether that's heading down a particular path without that fuller understanding of what might be achieved in terms of better outcomes for the community and that service delivery method. So that's the concern I have.
Well, though, more about working with other councils and delivery of services between councils, that's what I took. Because I agree with you, this is a council and many others in New Zealand that are driven by keeping the cost down. And we've seen the results of that because you don't invest and you don't maintain your city because you're trying to drive down maintenance costs.
Section 17 of the Local Government Act requires when you have a substantive contract, so like when the waters or the transport contracts come up for renewal, you need to do an assessment. And that assessment is not just cost, it's also about what you're delivering. So it looks, you need to look at the advantages and disadvantages of delivering the service in a range of ways. And it requires you as part of that to look at alternative structures and working with your, with other local authorities. It's sort of just the, so it's a requirement, but it's the quality of that review, which I think is more the point that you're making. Yeah, so you could.
They're not just driven by cost, are they?
No, no. Hence my comments about maintenance.
Maybe it's about then changing the wording slightly, reveal more cost-efficient methods of delivering the services and the desired outcomes, because I think that's what you're trying to say. Yeah?
Yep.
Yep.
Good smooth, Christine.
Then we're waiting on inflation and did the BCR help?
The commentary probably sent a pretty strong message, but. Yeah, we're having, so GHD are doing some more specific work for us for two reasons. One, it will be more specific to what we're doing rather than Bill, which is more generic. Secondly, Bill's not available until quite late in the piece and we're early, so. Add it over the next few months.
Twenty-six, environmental standards, resource consent requirements. And it's about the consenting process essentially for infrastructure capital works. Don't disagree with what is there, it's significant risks due to the resource consent process. But also, there is a risk depending what comes out of the resource management reforms and what the timeframes are in that bill. And if that is enacted in terms of the 10-year period. Now, fine, you can extend things, but if that becomes the mantra and trying to plan and invest in infrastructure for a 10-year period is ridiculous. So it was just whether there's a, you tease out that risk in terms of legislative change, which is beyond just the current resource consent process.
Trying to pick up things like if you don't get your water consent renewed on your streams and those sorts of things. Whereas I think you're raising a related but separate point, we might be better to have this as a separate one.
Do we need to note that in the recommendation?
Down three things to change. One is growth outside of the city. The one is that desired outcomes of service delivery. And the other one is the impact of legislative change, in particular the resource RM reform and the impact on planning and investing for growth in effect. Yeah.
So we were going to add a C for the impact of growth beyond TCC boundaries. Do you need to add in the other two?
At least you've got it recorded. Good, yeah.
I've lost track of where the desired outcomes were.
And the risk of legislative change, the other one that's been highlighted in the weekend is obviously the three waters.
Yeah.
Structure.
Yes, that's a huge risk.
Now appears to be a much higher risk than it might otherwise have been, particularly from a funding point of view.
Yes.
Not to count the human risk to all those people whose jobs are.
The issue we have at the moment is, we were always planning on doing potentially another scenario and looking at that, but the problem we have now is what does that scenario actually look like? So we need to digest that. And it may have also some further implications, which I need to talk about around the annual plan as well.
Back to the future. I thought our solution was a much better one. And I would have thought more in line with Nationals. So then, so I've got a recommendation C that we, additional assumptions include impact of growth beyond TCC boundaries, so that's a new assumption. And then alterations to assumption twelve, which is to add in desired outcomes to efficiency, service efficiency. The RMA reg reform on twenty-six, is that a new assumption? Okay, so that's a.
Getting a resource consent for infrastructure, yeah.
That's a, two new assumptions. And then, and then probably the three waters becomes, is that a new assumption? I think we've got some, there's some in here, I just can't remember the number. Twenty?
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So that'll be in, so two new assumptions and two changes to existing assumptions. Is that right?
And I think the waters one will stay as a watching brief, and as it moves, we'll have to modify it. So we might, yeah.
Okay, so Bill, you're moving A, B and the new C. And Stephen seconding that. This goes to show, though, the level of, the level of, I was going to say IQ, but also complexity in local government, doesn't it? And for people thinking about putting their names forward for election next year, have a look at this. This would be a good, anyone who's thinking about it, let's give them a copy of this. And give them a time limit as to how long they've got to read it. But it really does show just what is required to run a city like taronga. Okay, any further discussion? All right, I'll put that then. All those in favour say aye, against carried. Thank you. I've lost her. Ah, yes, I've lost a, I've lost a. Tag. Okay, so that, here we are, here it is. That brings us then to eleven point eight, existing use rights in the Mount Manganui industrial area. Okay.
So this report provides an update on a number of matters happening in the mountain industrial area. So as you're aware, there are a number of work streams underway in the mountain. That was reported to the SCFR committee recently. Two pieces of work which we particularly needed to get a better understanding for. One is the Mount Spatial Plan, but the other more importantly is the Mount Industrial Study, which is looking at future industrial zoning and issues. So as part of that work, we just had a look at what was happening in terms of the issues that have been raised by the Faroe Rua Marae back in late two thousand and nineteen and then into two thousand and twenty. There was work commissioned at that time where Mr Paul Beverley, who's a legal advisor with expertise in Maori law and treaty settlements from Badal Finlay, and a planner was commissioned. They worked, Phil Mitchell, so they worked jointly together with the Marae. That work has not yet come to a formal conclusion, but there is no current active work underway on that at the moment. There is work happening in terms of the regional council plan. Air Quality in the Court has made some interim decisions and they're reported within this report. And as part of the industrial planning work, we decided to get some legal advice to understand the extent of impact that the taronga city council could make and what choices it might have available, both in terms of industrial activity that is currently operating in the mount, and also in terms of future activities that, what decisions council could, what the scope of this council. The legal advice is attached. The key points are that those activities that are currently operating in the mount have existing use rights under the RMA. And there isn't a legal mechanism for taronga city council to terminate those under a district plan or any other mechanism. So the taronga city's council's opportunity are predominantly in terms of future activities and zoning, so you could constrain future. There may be an avenue through, for the regional council, but that is limited. There are a series of tests to be met, predominantly around soil conservation, water ecosystems and natural hazards. And they're not mainly the issues that are being raised in this context, but that's a matter for the regional council to consider. We also asked our legal advisors to consider whether the Natural and Build Environment Bill, if it was to be legislated as it currently is, whether that would provide any options for council to consider in terms of existing. The advice is no, not likely, but noting that actually the legislative process is not complete. So that is something that we'd have a look at. So the overall conclusion is that there isn't any feasible legal mechanisms open to taronga city council to compel industry to relocate. And our opportunities are really in the space of future, future actions for future activities to looking to establish themselves in the resource management sense in the industrial area. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, thank you, Christine. So my understanding then is that the Taronga Moana Advisory Board, does it have a board? Group, working group, started all this. And so this is part of the process now of reporting back to them. My understanding is they have a meeting in June. So we receive and note the legal advice. We're going to report, that's then going to go to the Smart Growth Regional Council, and then will be reported back to the Taronga Moana. I think I've lost my. Taronga Moana Advisory Working Group in June, so that there is a, that closes the loop. The important thing, though, I think for us, is that words matter. So first of all, I think it's important that we're talking, when we're talking about the Mount Industrial Planning Project that we are undertaking for the future, that we talk about emitters rather than heavy industry, because it is a port, a significant port to New Zealand Inc. and growing in significance annually. And there will be industry associated with that, some of which might be classed as heavy. So what we're concerned about are emitters. So let's stop talking heavy industry and start talking about emitters. And secondly, I note on page two, three, three, in paragraph twenty-one, we're talking about exploring mechanisms of how a move away from heavy industry can be achieved over time. Well, I think all the people in this room, given the legal position, might be dead before that could be achieved. So it is if a move, it should be if a move away from emitting industries can be achieved over time. I can't see the port moving anytime soon and the industry associated with that. We might be able to make some changes to emitters, but actually a port still has to operate and there will still be activities there. So I just, as I say, I think words are really, really important in this. And this is a really important project for the long term in the city. So we need to get it right and we need to get the understanding of what it is that we're trying to achieve right. But the main thing is that this piece of legal advice shows people are there, they have the right to be there, and we have no mechanism to change that. And that's an important step along the way. Bill?
Thanks, Chair, and certainly agree with your comments. Also, what this legal opinion does is actually clearly outlines what the situation is, because there's been a lot of discussion. And certainly, since we've been commissioners in terms of our ability or perceived ability to actually take action in this existing use rights space. So I think it's very timely information and certainly provides the base position in terms of the current RMA situation. I will also reiterate too, in terms of those existing use rights being overridden through a change to the regional plan, that's quite a high threshold and a very defined approach, which by and large is quite different to the air quality issues that we're facing in the air sheet. What I was going to suggest, Chair, is that this report and legal advice be provided to the Mount Air Quality Working Group. I provided advice on Thursday in terms of this was coming. But I think it would be helpful for the next meeting for everyone to actually have the advice and have one, no one is then having to recollect. They'll have all that advice in front of them. And then the decisions on where we go here is part of the Mount Industrial project. It's really, you know, there's a long journey, to be blunt, many decades in terms of changes that could well occur. And just finally, there are about, I think about eight hundred businesses in that Mount Industrial area. Employees about twelve thousand people, so a significant industrial area. At the end of the day, those businesses that emit is, find they might be significant, but a relatively small handful compared to the number of businesses in that area. I'm not downplaying the emissions, I'm just trying to give some idea of what the scope of that industrial area is.
Well, it's important to define them as emitters rather than heavy industry, because you can have heavy. I think I was challenged by the Chair of the Regional Council as to what I meant by heavy industry. And actually what we're talking about is the emissions. So we do want, we do want to have good air quality, because we have a substantial residential area adjacent to that industrial area, but yeah. Shad?
I'll just follow on from that as well. Yeah, I appreciate the advice and I think as Bill's outlined, it's really clear in terms of what level of influence we have. And we do have some influence in terms of some of the ongoing planning work that, for that wider Mount Industrial area, and then how that adjoins into the residential areas. I do find that the Air Quality Working Group is a useful forum, bringing all those parties together. And we have had some useful discussions. And I think those industry groups are well aware of the challenges they face, particularly from a social licence perspective and the direct, indirect perceived impact that they have on the residential community. So I think it's really useful for them to be involved in those conversations. But also thinking about those industry groups in particular, and the ones that we've had conversations with, some of the emitters, they have invested heavily into reducing their impact, because they're well aware of the effects that they have, but also their social licence. So we have to kind of balance up all of that, you know, they're well below their consenting emissions thresholds and are seeking to do more. So we have to put all of that into the mix, that they are trying to improve the operations and the activities that they undertake. So it is a complex mix, I think, when you think about the industries there and the rub that it has with the wider Farero community, but also the residential community. I just wanted to make those comments.
I don't think we need to add into the resolution to make it available to the air quality, or do you want to add that in? Gets referred to them, yeah.
But did you want the Smart Growth Report changed to refer to emitters? Or just a little covering memo with this one to say note that your focus is particularly on emitters? When we.
I think, I think we should change it. I think we should be talking about emitters, because we're not proposing to stop industry happening around the port. That would be.
So we'll modify that report, make those, change the references to heavy industry to emitters, and then that'll go through to the Smart Growth Meeting. It's all good.
Okay, the other question I was just going to ask Sarah, because I know you're trying to bring all of this together, is there will also be in that, of course, a natural hazards overlay as well for future. I'm not, I'm not sure what the sea level rise, what the flood mapping is, but that will also, because when we look at the maps, when we've looked at the Mount North study start, that's excluded this area. So, but I'm assuming that all of that modelling is being done through there too.
Definitely, and that'll be a critical part of the Mount Spatial Plan, yes.
Okay, all right, so that's, right, you're going to move that bill and Shad will second. Any further discussion? All those in favour say aye, against carried. So that now brings us, we have to take a break. Take a break. And we've got this verbal report on the project delivery. Have you got all your people here, have you?
Yes, I do.
Lined up at the end of the room?
That's right.
So we've just got to take a five minute break and then we'll come back. And that's just a verbal update. And how are you proposing to do that?
We are putting up a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, good, all right. Okay, I've just got nothing.
We'll talk to the presentation firstly from sort of a market perspective and what we're seeing, particularly in relation to the weather and the recent weather events. And then we'll go into the various activity areas.
It's eleven forty, so how about we take five minutes, get up, stand up, turn around, use the loo, come back at eleven forty-five, right? Because we're breaking for lunch at twelve thirty. Okay, let's resume and we have a good line up here. I don't even need to put my glasses on. So we're in your hands, I think.
Thank you. I'll start with a bit of an overall picture. If we can move to the first or second slide. And firstly, I just want to say apologies from James Woodward, who is the CPAD manager. He was really keen to be here to run you through this presentation. But unfortunately, he can't be here, he's off sick. So I'm just doing his little spiel on the first few slides and then I'll hand over to the activity managers. The agenda is firstly, an update on the overall progress for the year. So that shows you a graph of the months to date and where we're expecting to be year end. And market update with key insights, key risks to capital delivery. And then we're into the activity presentations. The next slide please. So this shows you the trajectory of the year today. So as you can see, November was fantastic, or we had a good rise of productivity up till November. December is always a little bit lower because of it being a shorter month, and then it usually ramps up in January as well. And you know all too well why January is low for this year. The, if you look at the dotted blue line, the forecast for twenty-two, twenty-three, it is expected to come up nearly to the to the three hundred mark, which we set out at the start of the year. I personally think if we're not going to get a summer, that is going to be a stretch target. So if we had had a normal February through to the end of the year, I think we would have been able to do that. But that's looking less likely by the day, but we'll just have to keep monitoring it. There's nothing more we can do about it. But in the meantime, we've had some, we've had some pretty pretty amazing results really. And we are up. At the end of January, we were a thirty-six million dollar increase on where we were last year. So and that's a thirty-two percent increase on the spend to date. So we, you know, we've had an extraordinary, I guess, finish to last year and then a start of this financial year in terms of getting contracts to the market, getting work out there and keeping busy. So I think that's something we should be proud of. And the production rate is low because of these reasons that we all know of. Any questions on that slide? We move on to, oh, yeah.
So your solid line of performance is to January. You must have some idea, because we're almost at the end of February, whether because we, you know, I know we haven't had any summertime, but what are we looking like in February? Do you think we're on that dotted line? Or do you think we're?
No, I think, again, it has I think it's a lower production rate again, because of the weather that we've had since February.
A few days fine and then a few days more rain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And a lot of the materials that we have, a lot of the work that we do is in ground, of course, and a lot of the materials that we do have is is a lot of fines, is very silty. It doesn't like double handling, it doesn't like being wet, it takes a long time to dry out. So that's a slow production right down. And inflation is likely to take longer to come down. The announcement with Reserve Bank last week, they reckon it'll come down by the quarter four and twenty-four, but that could well be optimistic. Paul's probably better to comment on that. But if they're looking at the sort of one to three percent, I think market analysts pitch status as a very positive view of the world. We put a number out there as the cyclone event could cost the government around the thirteen billion dollar mark. There has been a lot of numbers bandied about in that regard. So it's hard to put a number on it, but for comparison's sake, I think it's James dug out a slide here, which I think puts it into context what could happen for us. So this is just a a crystal ball gazing, I guess, in terms of the future impact. But if you have a look at the graph to the right there, that it shows the regional impacts or regional price indices following the Christchurch earthquake. And the red line is how the prices escalated in the Christchurch region for the following five, six years after the earthquake. And the black, blue and yellow are Auckland, Wellington and New Zealand overall respectively. So given our proximity to the Gisborne region or Tararati and Gisborne area, we could see an impact on the market here as well. That's basically what we're wanting to highlight. And on the last, sorry, the last bullet point in the second section, they had central government is rewriting the twenty-twenty-three budget. So I think crown funding for some of the capital activity that we were hopeful for may look a little bit less likely at the moment. And the last bullet point on that page just highlights the fact that we've seen the first increase in population on balance since pre-COVID. And we have noticed that in our recruitment as well lately, we've had better uptake on the roles we've advertised. So that's been positive for us. Which could then, of course, be offset by resources being demanded over east, so on the east coast. The risks at the moment, resource availability. And you know the work we're doing in providing the pipeline for our supply chain, panel agreements, et cetera, and early contractor involvement arrangements. So we do know that that's attractive to the market and I think we pitched that right. But there is money to be made over east. So we'll just just have to see what happens there and try to make ourselves as attractive as possible.
Just on that pipeline transparency, are we on the Infrastructure Commission's InfraComs pipeline?
Yep, yeah, we contribute to that regularly and, yep. Funding availability. The alternative funding models and then an open communication channel with central government. Not sure if anyone can pull any other rabbits out of hats.
Have to convince government that as much as they need to provide the resources to rebuild both Tararati and Hawke's Bay and parts of Auckland, the rest of the country is still operating things, you know, it's important that the rest of the country keeps going. So I think that's the focus that we have. And we'll be making that point to the Minister of Transport when he's here next week. This week, this week. You know, the needs over there are great, but the needs in the rest of the country don't go away. So that is a really important point for us to be making.
And that is a really important point to be making, that's right. But also in the transport space, in terms of the funding model and how that will work with the demand, not just impacted by the cyclone and the anniversary weekend events, but actually then generally in terms of the need for infrastructure improvement for us and its affordability or otherwise. Big conversations. And cost escalations, of course, because of the reasons that we've talked about already. So we keep reviewing the inputs into the annual plan and the long-term plan. And I guess for some projects, we need to look at the viability of projects as well and not just throw new numbers at them, but actually from a business case perspective, do some of them actually make sense? Or should we do something different? So that's part of what we need to include in that conversation as well. And that's it in terms of the overall picture. Not a very positive one, but definitely a challenge. So any questions? Or shall I hand over to Brendan?
Thanks, Nick. Next slide. So just in terms of highlights from a transport perspective, the Burritavale intersection upgrade, we've committed to that tender, so that construction will start as soon as it stops raining. So at the rate we're going, that's probably December, January next year. In terms of our bus shelter rollout, so we've started that contract now. So we've got in the order of a hundred and fifty shelters to be built over the next eighteen to twenty-four months. So we're trying to average about ten a month. So if we can get a good run, we'll be obviously finished in the eighteen months. Otherwise, we'll stretch out to twenty-four. The eight to ten is based on our supplier's ability to manufacture and deliver. So in terms of the low cost, low risk we can do, yes, yeah. Now, we've still got plenty of funding for shelters, so it's just getting approval of the sites. In terms of our low cost, low risk construction panel, so that's closed. So we're just reviewing those at the moment. The intent behind that is it allows us to get those projects to market a lot quicker. So effectively, we'll have a panel and we can guarantee work for the providers on that panel and they can go from project to project. So hopefully that will be up and operating sort of mid-year. In terms of Cameron Road Stage Two, so we're now out for consultation on that with the community. So the first of those events started today and will take place over the next sort of three to four weeks. Monganui Road Stage Three is now largely complete and Stage Four will be constructed this winter in association with the skate park. So we'll have the two projects linked together. And the Warrarua Cycle Way project, we hope to start at the end of March. So that's the project that council sort of offered to try and broker an agreement between the various parties. So we finally got there and we should be underway at the end of March. Next slide. So this is just in terms of our financial performance. Unfortunately, everything transport does is incredibly weather dependent. So we have seen a reduction. I think we were originally targeting ninety-nine percent budget. So we're now sort of hitting around that ninety-three percent, which is still a reasonably good outcome. I would say that there is some risk involved in that. We actually were able to secure some extra sealing resource from a region because they can't work there currently. But unless it stops raining, we can't do much. So for example, we had four days sealing planned this week. We've obviously lost today, potentially tomorrow. So you know, that'll be fifty percent of what we planned this week won't be done. But in terms of overall, the main change for us is particularly in that Taurico West Programme Budget. So we anticipated a fifty million dollar spend this financial year. It's only eleven, so some of that's tied up with property purchase. And it's just a slightly later start to the project. The actual budget's not changing, it's just from when it was phased two years ago in the LTP till now, there's been a bit of movement. That has been offset by an increase on the spend rate on Cameron Road. So that's not additional budget. That's the adjusted budget. We're just spending it faster than, again, originally planned in the forecast. In terms of the additional forecast, PEI, the next stage of Tiokara Drive and the Sands Intersection closes at the end of February, so we'll start construction on that. And we'll go to tender for the bridge in March, closing so that we can confirm that tender by thirtieth of June. Next slide. So in terms of these projects, this is just a bit of a status update. At a high level, we're seeing twenty to thirty percent cost inflation in a lot of our projects. So that's why all of our costs sit as yellows, because we are seeing that uplift. So that's why all of our costs sit as yellows, because we are seeing that uplift. In terms of Cameron Road Stage One, given the weather that we've had in both January and February, I suspect that December date will adjust probably till early twenty twenty four, but we'll work with the joint venture around the planned construction date. In terms of the other projects there, I think they're reasonably self-explanatory. Area B is now out for consultation or about due to go out for consultation with the community. So that goes into a lot more detail around the direct impacts that that particular option will have on individual property owners. Again, that will take probably about a month. Uh, next slide.
Ah, judgment of, you know.
Oh, notice of requirement. So effectively, um, Waukeha Katahi have sort of started negotiations with the landowners up there in terms of property purchase, et cetera, and designations. Yep. So yeah, Area B is the cycle link that connects from Cameron Road, goes through Matawa, Otamota, Brookfield, Judea and then back and hawks again onto Cameron Road. So it completes that sort of loop. So if you're in the western part of the city, you would have a complete cycle network. Uh, next slide. In terms of, uh, for transport, our risks and opportunities, I think we are probably highly affected by government policy because fifty one percent of our funding is from Waukeha Katahi. So of the infrastructure groups, we're the most exposed to a change in government priorities in terms of funding. I think we are receiving some signals that funding might be tight heading forward. Um, so at this stage, when we're looking at our L T P, we're assuming that everything is the same until we're told otherwise. But signals are that funding may be tighter than currently. In terms of program slippage, the four large business cases, so that's fifteenth Tarat, Cameron Road Stage Two, Hewlett Road and Area B have all moved about three months just to allow more time for the consultation process. So they're all sort of moving together, which is good. Um, but it does mean that those business cases won't be finished until later this calendar year than originally planned. So it's roughly three months on each. In terms of cost escalation, as I mentioned, we're seeing twenty to thirty percent increase from our budgeted costs. Now some of those business cases are coming towards first cut costings, about twenty to thirty percent higher. I guess that's a reflection of a constrained resource market, material costs have gone up through COVID, et cetera. And as Nick showed before, there is a risk that we could see further increases depending on what happens with the construction industry.
Brendan, the, the delay in business case and consultation has, creates a risk in itself that will be slower to the queue for what limited money is available. Um, what's the risk of that? I, Waukeha Katahi go and spend a lot more money elsewhere because we're not front of the queue.
I think there is a little bit of risk with that. I guess they are partners on all of those projects, so they're, they're acutely aware of, of what's inside the business case. Uh, they are also those key sort of projects that unlock a whole lot of others. So in terms of if you were going to delay projects, they're probably not the four you would delay because they do unlock a large part of the network, particularly if you look at those key corridors. And they're very well aligned with the government GPS in terms of that sort of mode shift sort of outlook that they're trying to achieve. But there is some risk, but I think there's risk across all programs regardless, just depending on how much funding is left in the, you know, T F. Excellent.
Good morning, Commissioner's City Waters, go to the next slide please. So as I'll show in a minute, the renewables program is actually forecast to be tracking ahead of our budget. And it's probably due to Cameron Road is one example where we're having to spend more money on, on some of those renewals. But, um, you know, we've got a number of staff working across the delivery on this. That's probably helping to push that budget over the line. In terms of stormwater, um, it's nice to be able to report that our network coped well and we're fortunate enough not to get some of the deluge that's obviously landed down, down country. Being saying that, it's kept some of the city waters staff very busy, especially, um, yeah, treatment plants. Um, so my hat's off to those, they need, yeah, the, the unsung heroes that carried on and behind the scenes and no one notices it. Terms of a real positive for me is the planning team under Claudia Hill, but we've finally got a hundred percent of her team in place, which is, is a group of eight people. The last person's actually come from Sri Lanka, brought them in, very technically qualified. Fitted, younger guy fitted in really well, his wife has ended up down in Waukehatahne as similar role. So, so that's quite good. Um, the Waiari is set to be opened officially by the commissioners on the twenty second of March. I'm looking forward to that, that, that really is a pivotal um, project in the fact of it's, you know, two hundred million dollar project. It's taken over fifteen years to get it from start to finish. We follow it right back, so I think that's really going to be quite a celebration there. Um, in terms of working out there, Opal Drive is one of the key ones. It's underway, there's a rising main and a, and a pump station that's being built. There's a lot of activity um in that area. Uh, Richard Collins is one of the key people running that project. Um, Tamanga, I'll show you a picture of Tamanga in a minute. Trial five was spawny successful, so now we have a pile methodology to be able to deal with the geotechnical nature of the ground. Um, so that's, that's a positive, it's taken a while to get to this point. And the last one I think is Harrison's cart in Papamoa has a great outcome. And it was quite funny, we had a phone call the other day from an elderly gentleman. He was complaining, he was in a wheelchair, complained he didn't want to go over the bumps and the road going in there. We thought it was strange. What he hadn't realised is, is a concrete footpath built alongside. So our project manager followed him through, he was very apologetic. So we actually got something right, so. Next slide please. So that is what our bioreactor site, current, what current looks like after that last weather event. There's probably the same out there today. Um, they've had to build a bit more of a platform on there. It's essential, these piles are like around this table, there's a ring set of piles that go in. And the idea of the piles is to stop um a liquefaction event happening in earthquake. And then within the square grid you see here, there's a whole heap of piles need to go, it's about three thousand. So getting it right has been the key. This is probably the only area that where we're predicting this project um timeframe is very slow and it's going to be even slower, but at least we have a methodology. Um, what's stopping the project, we split into two parts, so it's below ground and above ground. And we've had two separate contracts, so the second contract is being held up. So we're trying to sort out how we can keep them working on other things. Next slide please. That disappears in about um three, four days. Um, they put a pump in there, pump it, pump it out. We, we've come up with a different methodology because the site should be down by another two metres. And what we're doing is we're now piling at that level and then there'll be surplus pile to chop off. But if we created a hole in there, it would be a swimming pool, so just taking a different tack. Um, the way I have put up here, as you're well aware, this is the intake and, you know, the, the river little stream, sorry, looks beautiful at the moment. If you just go to the next picture, get, we'll zoom out a bit and you'll see the valley. Gives you a bit of an idea. And then if you go to the next picture, after the rain event, this is what we had. So the river rose approximately five and a half metres and the mud ended up in, inside the compound right into, picture on the right hand shows the pump station. So it was filled with mud. And while we continued operating, we have found that, um, we've got some damage to one of the pumps. We pulled out the check and that's because it took too much grit through. So we had to make a modification there, but it gives you the, an understanding of the power of, um, of that area there when it rains. Excellent. And I put this one up here because this is a bit of a flagship. This has taken two years from when we put the pipes through to finally get a final surface. So hopefully Western Bay and others west link will be happy with. Next slide. Thank you. So here's our program. So as I pointed out, you know, Rover's spending slightly on the renewals, but the other projects are running reasonably true to form. I heard the question before around the weather, yes, it has had an impact. And, um, you know, again, until we can get some of our work out of the ground, it, it tends to draw the program out. But currently as it stands, we still believe we're on track for the expenditure. Um, and I put a red in there because that Tamanga, the, the bioreactor will be behind. And while the date shows December, it's still unclear to us. The contractor was due to start on site again today. So, you know, it doesn't, doesn't help things. In terms of some of the other ones on there, they're, they're all running well and there's no, no real concerns at this stage. So that's, it isn't a good news story. Yes, yes.
And the completion date?
Yeah, yeah, and we've gone from an eight hour day, the contract is up to sixteen hour day and we're going to be going to a twenty four hour day, so it's going to ramp up. So we've got to meet that date obviously for the resource concern, so. And the next slide please. So the procurement process is one we've been trying to, to take on a journey as we're going out. Before Christmas, I think our reporter would be in a place to put something out. That date slipped to March and there's a good reason for that. We've had to take some of our team on the journey because it has to be managed in-house. So I'm, I'm pleased to say that we do have documentation ready to go out and it's going to go out in March, early March through to June. The, um, there'll be two panels, one for the construction, one for the professional services doing the actual real design work. Um, but we've taken some logical steps and it's, it's a ramp up. So next year is, is probably ten, fifteen million, then it ramps up over the next five years. Um, it, what, what I'm pointing out is that it hasn't affected our current delivery program. We've tracked on and we've had to try and fit this in to make it work. We specifically chose in areas like the major pipelines that are going to be built. We put that into this program. We've also had the team involved because we wanted to try and take a different tack in terms of panel. We talked about the nine outcomes, it's around how do we get those outcomes we want? And so we've put some really good challenges in the documentation around, holding around delivery for non-delivery. And we'll, we'll share those with you shortly. But once we get to a stage of understanding the number of, um, it seems reasonably healthy. We know we'll get at least five for the construction and I imagine it'll be a similar number for the professional service part of the contract. But I'll, I'll talk more about that next time around. Excellent, please. And in terms of risks, I've talked about the bioreactor, that's probably the, the big one there. Um, again, our biggest thing is around cost escalation. So the latest discussions have indicated that we could have some, some of our forward work up by fifty percent in value. Um, and so we're trying to work through that carefully now. Before I give you any sort of figures, we'll, we'll make sure we know our numbers. But there's definitely a, a driver with, um, more work than there is available companies out there at the moment to do it. So that's driving the prices up, let alone material costs and things like that. But generally, we're, we're in a comfortable space at the moment. Thank you.
On the Waiari intake, do you need to do mitigation works given?
Yeah, so what, what we've done in-house, Brian Everett, one of, one of my team is actually, they've gone in, they pulled this pump apart. They've found that grit actually got up through the first seal into the second one, which caused a bit of a damage. So they're looking to modify that to ensure that we don't have the same situation again. And it, it's one of those things, it's, it's in a wet well, so you, you, you could put a camera in there, but it, it, it's because it's so murky, it's hard to see. They're going to try putting some sensors in there. The idea is to try and catch as the silt builds up, you mean to shut everything down by a certain, otherwise keep sucking it up. So yes, it is. We've had Becca, who did the design, sitting in there too, to try and figure out a solution.
We have, uh, we have also footage of the, of the flooding event. Um, and, and that was quite extraordinary actually, and we do suspect that there may have been a slip upstream which dammed and which dammed the water coming down from the ranges. And when the, when the slip cleared, uh, there was this wall of water because it rose just extremely quickly. Um, so yeah, quite an extraordinary event.
My question, had, had, did it perform according to the modelling that we'd done or?
It, it, it did, so, um, the design calls for a one in a hundred year event. And so it topped the plant floor, which was expected, is designed to do that up to that point. So, um, and this was quite a, a significant event. Um, so I, we, we're confident that, that, you know, it's been designed properly. And in, and in fact, if the sediment, if we could have dealt with the sediment, it wouldn't have been an issue. I mean, the plant ran, no one's any of the wiser, it's just the damage it's caused to one of the pumps, you know. So that's, we still want it to happen, happen again, so we'll put some, something in place to stop that from occurring.
Another question, so I'm just picking up next point. If, if there wasn't that damming that occurred further upstream, we would have been fine in the lower catchment, you know, where the, um, where the facility is. We wouldn't have had that wall of water.
Uh, probably, probably not, it wouldn't have been as bad from what we can gather, yeah.
Morning, uh, next slide please. So I like lots of pretty pictures. So we've been up to heaps in the lead up and before Christmas, um, delivering lots of really good community assets. Um, probably the biggest and brightest one is the top one, Pacific Park Playground. So that was, um, in Arateki and that was delivered pre-Christmas. Um, there's been a heap of work going on in the valley. Um, we've got our two cycleway bridges were installed just after Christmas. And then of course, um, this month, we're also livening the southern realignment and connecting it. So that's a very significant project milestone for that particular, um, project. And there is a pivot into the local hapu. Uh, we've got a heap of work going on in the historic village at the moment. I don't know if you've been down there and seen all the scaffolding, but, um, complex C two's well underway at the moment. That's the refit for the cafe and event center and a new commercial kitchen going in there. Plus a number of, um, smaller upgrades going on around the village with the, um, incubator and some of the community spaces there as well. Hyla Park, that's due to be opened next month. Uh, yes, next month, it's not quite March yet. Um, so that's gone particularly well, that's a complete upgrade of that part. Basketball court, a new toilet block being installed there, so that's pretty exciting for the local community. Uh, we finished the first, uh, the upgrades, the small amenity improvement upgrade package that we delivered in the lakes. We've completed the first stage of the work in Welcome Bay and the team are come back after Christmas and they're into the second round of work at Welcome Bay. We've also got a package of work that we're going to roll out in the Papamoa area, um, between now and the end of the financial year as well. So we've got two, um, project teams now which, um, are fully resourced. So, um, they're, they're, they're right into it, delivering these assets to the community. That one, it's got, um, there's shade going over that playground here and there's quite a few shades that was going in, yeah, yeah. So in terms of our budget, the bad weather has affected our commencement on some of our larger projects. So we are a little bit delayed getting underway on Marine Parade, for example, at the moment. Um, but we're still on track, ready to have a reasonable year in terms of how we're going. Um, so we're reasonably confident in the figures that we've got up there. In terms of our top five projects, um, we've got the, um, the one that's obviously in the red is the Manawa Falls at the moment, which we're still working through, um, the options around that. Um, we've got a little bit of a time delay on Marine Parade with getting that up and running, but we expect to be on site in the next two weeks. Um, and the same with the offloading wharf, we're still working through a couple of consent issues around the piling and what that looks like. In terms of our risks and opportunities, um, for us, it's still that cross council project dependencies. Um, one of those is particularly around the skate park, there's a joint governance group in place now between us and transportation on that one to try and manage that. Um, again, it's the inflation and cost escalation which is, um, ongoing. So we're just regularly checking particularly those projects we've got in development for the L T P to see that we've got those project, um, budgets right. And it's the availability of contractors and consultants. So we've had our panel agreements in place for some time now and that certainly helped us in terms of getting through some of that small work and those, uh, local community immunity packages that we've been delivering. Um, so that's worked really well for us and we're just continuing to work on those, um, panel agreements.
If there's no questions for Amanda, I will, uh, I will proceed. Um, apologies from Mike, who's in Auckland for a series of meetings today, so I'm, I'm going to speak on his behalf. Um, and also apologies for the lack of pictures. Um, and also apologies for the lack of pictures. Um, I like pictures and there were some great ones, but, uh, most of our stuff is at the render stage and I know you guys have seen the renders hundreds of times. So I just didn't think we'd bother putting those in again. Otherwise I could take you lots of photos of one point eight metre, um, hurricane fencing. Um, but hopefully we'll turn that into actual things to take pictures of quite quickly. Um, just in terms of some highlights, uh, a big day for us in the middle of December when we approved the next stage of Tamanu Takel Tapa. Uh, circa twenty million dollars of expenditure on, uh, design work, uh, which is progressing well. As I mentioned earlier, the dive present car park is well underway, scheduled for completion in April. Uh, and then we will immediately close the strand north car park and start work on that. Uh, cargo shed, again, as I mentioned earlier, is finished and has been handed over to, um, the community services team to operate. We've had several meetings with the Otamataha Trust in terms of the future use of that space. Just so everyone's on the same page in terms of, uh, how we envisaged it contributing to the vibrancy of the city centre. Uh, so we look forward to getting our first couple of events in there and getting it up and, up and underway. Um, designs for the waterfront coming to council in April. The good news about the railway underpass with the confirmation from Kiwi Rail that we've got a block of line, uh, over the first three days of Easter. So, uh, working to organise everything, uh, for that.
Important thing is that the designers change, so we don't need the great big crane.
It's my understanding.
So it is going to be pushed through underneath. So it's, um, not, not as weather dependent.
Correct. Uh, Tunks Reserve in Elizabeth Street East. So, uh, to your question earlier, Bill, uh, in the market, work's scheduled to start on the first of May. A hundred and sixty-four day work programme, so fourteenth of December, twenty twenty-three, don't hold me to that. Um, but that's what we're aiming for. I said, let's call it pre-Christmas. Um, developed design for Masonic Park nearly finished, uh, construction scheduled to start in July. Uh, and then we've just completed engagement with, um, stakeholders for Beacon Wharf. So I haven't seen that yet, but just compiling that at the moment and we'll bring it back to you, um, for your information.
Gareth, just flicking back in terms of dive present car park completed in April and you're closing the strand. So do contractors essentially then move in as opposed to closing it and nothing's happened?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. But we just, we don't want to close, uh, nor, strand north car parking until, uh, dive present is fully open and operational. But the second that is, yes, we'll close that down and contractors will move in straight away. We, we're just, um, confirming dates at the moment because there is a desire from the community to hold a Tomatini celebration, uh, locally. And we, we want to do that on the waterfront. So we're just trying to line up all those dates, um, and see if we can make it work. Uh, next slide.
Go off that. Um, um, so Masonic Park, the work with existing businesses fronting onto that is proceeding well. Cause we had one come and visit us concerned about some of the rules and regulations and things.
Yeah, the meeting hasn't happened yet, but I've asked for the, uh, landlords and tenants of all of the businesses that face onto Masonic Park to come together to get a project update from the design team and the project team. But then also our property team in terms of what that means for them. So my understanding that's scheduled for the next ten days or so. Next slide. So just in terms of our programme, um, we have a high level of confidence in the numbers we've put up. But obviously, um, our forecast to the year end is, um, considerably less than a hundred percent. The majority of that is as a result of being in, still being in the design phase as opposed to, um, getting the bulldozers out. So, um, yeah, we're doing everything we can to spend as much of the money that's been allocated between now and the end of the year. But then next year, we're expecting to be a very busy year. And we will carry forward some funds potentially in addition to Beacon Wharf.
So I'm really concerned that we are spending so much time in design. And I just think of Tunks Reserve, we spent almost a year on consultation. And I just think, we've just got to get on with some of this stuff and we've got to deliver it. And it won't be absolutely perfect the way various people want it, but it will be done. Um, because, because that is a bit tragic. And I, and I was going to raise it at the next public realm, um, committee meeting, which is later this week. Um, because, because some of the consultation timelines are just too long. So, you know. Hard words.
Can definitely pass that feedback on to the team. Um, next slide. Just, uh, the top five projects within the programme at the moment. Uh, happy to try and answer any questions, but, uh, the library and site A works are tracking well and to plan. Spring Street Car Park, we've run into a couple of issues in terms of the complexities and, um, a likely extension of the timeframe to get it done. But we're very close. We're still only, you know, a couple of months away from finishing that project. Uh, noting that the Elizabeth Street one's been done, so it'll be good to get those both done and dusted. Uh, waterfront playground progressing well and a couple of really great, um, tenders received. So they're going through the evaluation process at the moment. Um, so that's an exciting development. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Civic Admin Building, uh, ninety Davenport Road, uh, spayed in the ground formally as of Friday this week. Cordings are up, establishing on site, um, and looking at a two-year programme. Um, that was in relation to the internal fit out. So that discussion we had about stairs versus no stairs, that pushed up the cost, which we resolved, um, two or three months ago. Um, so yeah, we can probably change those back to green. I guess they're green in terms of what we've agreed subsequently, but they're probably yellow, orange compared to the original project scope.
Not sure whether it's you Gareth or Anne, just in terms of waterfront playground. It can, is that need to be totally completed or can it be in, in stages?
Yeah, I think the plan is definitely just to try and get it all done and, and move at pace to, to do that. Uh, next slide is just, uh, top three risks. Um, so a recent one, I guess, was the, uh, railway underpass. And one of many weather events we've had over the last two or three months that has had a significant impact on our ability to deliver. That is, looking out the window, still a risk, uh, over the next couple of months. Uh, same as I think nearly everyone else, that inflation and cost escalation risk. And what that means for our ongoing budgets and something we don't have a lot of control over, but we're all closely monitoring.
Shouldn't we then, with that in mind, with new projects, our, our, um, contingencies must be growing. So we're better to go under budget and allow for that. Otherwise we're going to be constantly having to find new money.
Correct. That's my understanding of how budgets are being presented these days. But when you keep adding, call it, um, contingency and escalation over a wide variety of projects that were already large in scale and size, the number starts to add up quite quickly. Correct, yeah. Uh, and then the third one, obviously, um, just from a project governance point of view. Uh, we're mitigating any potential risks by setting up a delivery CCO. Uh, we're advertising for that at the moment. We're in Crossroads this week to chat to the team down there about how that's worked for the Takaha project and hoping to have that in place by the middle of the year. Answer any questions?
So I, I don't have a specific question for Gareth unless anyone else does. I mean, the bottom line here is despite cost escalation, cyclones, general weather, lack of availability of staff, uh, and, uh, material supply, we're doing really well. I mean, that is the reality. There's an enormous amount of work underway here. Um, no, it's not where we would have liked it to have been. But yes, we are doing everything within our power to mitigate those impacts that we've had. Um, and we're making good progress. I remember when we went out with the, the rates increases in our first year here, there was a very strong support from the business community to making the investments to enable the city to prosper. Uh, and that was, but that was tagged with, can you deliver? And what we're seeing here is that provided all of the tides aren't against us, which they are, we can deliver, we're building our capability. Um, and that is, as you say, Nick, quite a considerable step up in, uh, in the implementation programme. We've got more to do, there's no question about that, and we need to continue to ramp that up. But, um, I'm actually really, uh, given the circumstances, I'm really pleased with the progress that we've made. Um, my question, um, is probably to Nick. In terms of how we are seen by the market, the supply market, uh, as being, I've positioned ourselves as being too difficult to operate with, uh, in the past. Um, how, how does the market perceive us as a client? Um, and the attractiveness of our pipeline to them for delivery? Because if we can really turn up the dial on our market attractiveness, then we might be able to deal with some of those wider strategic challenges that we face.
Yeah, so, so, um, I mean, the, the best gauge we have, I think, is the tender box, right? And, and, and if every, if every job we put to the market is a race, then we're in a good position, I think. We, and, and, and that's, that's basically what's happening. And, and like Calvin said before, we, we've got half a dozen, um, consultants and contractors lining up for the, for the panels there. We, um, we generally have a good uptake on what we put to the market. Um, and of course, the direction we're heading in is exactly what they told us a year and a half ago when we, oh, no, sorry, not quite a year and a half ago. But in January, February last year, when we set off on this project with Ara. Um, that's exactly what, what they did tell us, you know, make, make sure we have visibility of your pipeline. And we're certainly giving them that through the decision-making in chambers, but also, uh, in terms of visibility of, of that, that procurement strategy with what we're putting to the market. And, and I also want to say that although there's been, it has taken us longer than we wanted to, to get the, the Three Waters panels, for instance, onto the market. Uh, as, as Calvin said, we, we have continuously been rolling out a lot of work. So it's not like they're sitting there waiting for something to happen. And we've also, um, implemented some of these more contemporary procurement practices while we've been doing that. So for instance, the Opal Drive pump station, uh, and the Wairaki pump station, that was, that's a, a sort of a, it's not an innovative procurement method, but it's, it's one, uh, that involves an ECI for the second phase of that. So that's forty million dollars worth of work we just put to the market by having the first one designed. And then, uh, the builder will, through the learnings of, um, operational learnings in constructing the first one, will then apply that to the design of the second one. So, um, we, we're implementing some of that innovation already. Um, so, so on, on balance, I think it's, it's good, but it's all, you know, and then, but then we're having, um, we're having some pretty tough negotiations with some of them as well, um, when they're not meeting our, meeting our expectations. So I guess it depends on in, in which context you, you, you talk to them. Um, you know, we, we don't want to be a, an easy target and, uh, you know, easy, easy, easy money either. So, um, it's, it's give and take here.
Absolutely. And I think the, the big message to us, I think, is the commission, is the challenge on funding. That's kind of particularly central government funding, uh, that was already extremely problematic is just multiplied to another, another level. And I think, you know, when we come round to the long-term plan, we're going to have to have that conversation with the community about alternative funding sources. Uh, because the choice will be, we either just have to put up with what we've got because there's no money to invest for the future. Or we're going to have to find new ways of funding going forward. Um, and transport is going to be the big challenge in that. Um, it'll be interesting to see whether or not the community has the appetite to invest for a better future or not.
Okay, so look, thank you very much. I think, um, I think what, that we, we did, we did have some concerns about where the capital programme was. I think you've all laid a lot of those concerns, but I really do think that we have seen a considerable lift in the capability of the organisation and a huge amount of work from the staff. And I just, you know, have to say, you see it on a daily basis, a- a- as, as you said, Calvin. No one saw what, what went on in the background, but just huge dedication by the staff. And also I think, um, a, a determination to make things happen in the city. And that, and that is, is counting a lot for us despite all the headwinds that we've got is to know that, you know, the staff are as invested in this as, as, um, as we've become over the last, um, couple of years in turning this wonderful place into a great place to live and, um, and, and work. So please take back to your staff, uh, our congratulations that despite everything, we are, they are achieving a lot for the community and that, um, they continue to find innovative ways to deal with to, um, the headwinds that are, that are, that are in front of us, whether, whether it is funding, um, or, or, or weather. The, the, the scenario of weather is right through the, the, all the areas that we're looking at. And, uh, um, people working twenty-four hours, it's, um, underground, um, you know, is quite something. So thank you very much. And we are going to have to break for lunch. Um, do you want to? Put your finger on the pulse for something?
Oh, no, I just wanted to say, well, thanks for the acknowledgement. That means a lot to staff, I'm, I'm, I'm sure of that. Um, but also in terms of the, the documenting, the presentation, I, I'm assuming we can include this in the minutes of the, the presentation.
So we, we, we just.
So you have a record of.
We'll just, we'll just, uh, receive, if we receive the information and the, and then that goes into the minutes. Yeah, so. The presentation gets attached, yeah. So Bill, you'll move that and shared second. Um, so thank you very much. Appreciate it, we kept you waiting a bit. All those in favour say aye. Against, carried, thank you. And why don't we do the resolution to move into public excluded for the reasons outlined in the, in the agenda? Seconded by Stephen, moved by Bill, seconded by Stephen. All those in favour say aye. Against, carried. And we're back from lunch at, uh, quarter past one.